Let's begin with a word of prayer, and then we'll be in Revelation chapter 16. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for your word. I thank you that you are our bridegroom. I thank you that it is you who sustains the relationship with us. And as many times as your people have forsaken you, as many times as they have gone after other gods, as many times as we have done that, you remain faithful. And so, Father, I pray that you would strengthen us, not with our faithfulness, but with your faithfulness. And we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. So I ask you to talk about just spiritual adultery and what that looks like in your life and in the life of faith, of believers in Christ. We're going to get to that in a little bit here. But what I want to do is, I want to go back to Revelation chapter 16, verse 17. And there's especially a word here that I would like us to just spend a little time talking about and thinking about. So Revelation chapter 16, verse 17. "The seventh angel poured out his bowl into the air, and a loud voice came out of the temple from the throne saying, 'It is done.'" So this word here, "it is done," it's not the same word in Greek as what Jesus speaks from the cross when he says, "It is finished." It's not the same word, but it's what we should be thinking about, okay? And it's not in, if you have a red letter Bible, these words are not in red in your Bible, yes? Is that correct? So this is God the Father speaking here, right? So "it is done." It's all done. And all God's people say, "Oh, man, we couldn't..." Because we're grateful for that, because we couldn't stand anymore, right? But it's finished. It's done. It's over. It's kind of like, you know, your parents when you're out of timeout, right? Okay, your timeouts, you can come out of timeout now. And this time of drawing people into repentance, it's over. I'm done, okay? Which is good news, okay? Verse 18. "And there were flashes of lightning, rumblings, peals of thunder, and a great earthquake, such as there had never been since man was on earth; so great was that earthquake! The great city was split into three parts, and the cities of the nations fell; and God remembered Babylon the Great," so we're going to get into Babylon the Great today, "to make her drain the cup of wine of the fury of his wrath. And every island fled away, and no mountains were to be found; and great hailstones, about one hundred pounds each, fell from heaven on people; and they cursed God for the plague of the hail, because the plague was so severe." So let's go back to John chapter 19, and we want to just think about this word of Jesus from the cross. So this is John chapter 19. Let's begin in verse 28. So Jesus is on the cross. After this, Jesus, knowing that all was now finished, said, "To fulfill Scripture, I thirst." A jarful of sour wine stood there, so they put a sponge full of the sour wine on a hyssop branch and held it to his mouth. When Jesus had received the sour wine, he said, "It is finished." And he bowed his head and gave up his spirit. So probably you know, or you've heard, that this "it is finished" is three words in English. It's one word in Greek. And the word, if you were to parse that and say, "Okay, what is the tense and what is all of that?" It is a perfect verb, which means, so the way we say it in English is you have to use multiple words to explain it. You have to use things like "he," "it has been finished." So this is a perfect, it's a passive, so we don't really have passive voice in English. And it's first person, or third person singular, so "it has been accomplished." So here's why this matters. So even in English and in Greek, when we use a perfect tense verb, or we try to speak in that way, what it means is that it means it is in a present and enduring state of accomplishment. Are you with me so far? When Jesus says this word, the work of salvation is in a present and an enduring state of accomplishment. Okay? It's not like it was accomplished way back when, and now something is missing. No, what Jesus is saying is it has been and forever is currently being, currently accomplished for you. So then here's what happens, is then Jesus says things like, to his disciples, things like this. "Take heart, I have overcome the world." He says things like, "He who is in you is greater than he who is in the world." Heard those things before? What do you make of that? Compare that against what's currently happening in our world. So Jesus says it is in a present and enduring state of accomplishment. "He who is in you is greater than he who is in the world. Take heart, I have overcome the world." And you look at the world, does it look like that? No, it doesn't. So you're reading through Revelation, and you got hailstones, you've got people dying, you've got all of these things that are happening. And we say, and all people say, like, "What in the world's going on?" Right? So I want us to turn your Bibles to 1 John, chapter 3. So there is a, kind of a helpful way of understanding that we live, the way we live now, and as we wait the return of Jesus. And it's really this tension between the now and the not yet. So 1 John, chapter 3, this is really the only place in the Bible where it really brings together this now and not yet idea. Verse 1. "See what kind of love the Father has given to us, that we should be called children of God; and so we are now. The reason why the world does not know us is that it did not know him. Beloved, we are God's children now, right now. And what we will be has not yet appeared; but we know that when he appears, we shall be like him, because we shall see him as he is." And so, in our life of faith, following Jesus, this side of his return, we're going to live in this tension between the now and the not yet, aren't we? We're going to say, so let me ask this, when Jesus says "it is finished," has the war been won? Has the war been won? Yes. Does it look like that? No. Does it, so let's take a look here in Ephesians, Ephesians chapter 2. Verse 1. "And you were dead in trespasses and sins, in which you once walked, following the course of this world, following the prince of the power of the air, the Spirit that is now at work in the sons of disobedience, among whom we all once lived, in the passions of our flesh, carrying out the desires of the body and the mind; and were by nature children of wrath, like the rest of mankind. But God, being rich in mercy, because of the great love with which he loved us, even when we were dead in our trespasses, made us alive together with Christ. By grace you have been saved," you should know these words almost by heart, "and raised us up with him, and seated us with him in the heavenly places in Christ." What does that mean? "And seated us with him in the heavenly places in Christ." What does that mean? Let me say it this way, that you currently, as you sit here and draw breath right now, everything that God in Christ has promised to you, you possess it now, today. It's yours. It belongs to you. And what does the Bible say? The Bible says that he has given you a down payment to guarantee that promise to you, that you own it now. And what is that down payment? The Holy Spirit. So he has promised it to you, and you possess it now. Now, why does that matter? Anybody? You tell me why that matters? Yes, Fred? Well, it means, that's right. It means you don't have to work for it, that you possess it all now, that God in Christ has given everything to you right now. I would say it slightly different, that it's all yours now. God has accomplished all of it for you. And there is not this, "Okay, it's my blood, sweat, and tears that gave it to you, and now it's your blood, sweat, and tears that needs to hold on to it." That's really, so here's the point. Okay, anybody else, before I go on? Yes? Ooh, that's great. Nothing can separate you from the love of God that is in Christ Jesus, those Romans 8, yes? Anybody else? Yes? It's your hope? Yes? Okay? Yes? Yes. Okay? He's already paid for it. He's the one who owns it. He's the one that gives it. Yes, Richard? It's correct. That's correct. So yes, he's correct, that it is a debt word, where, you know, if you would say, "Paid in full," you'd kind of stamp that, "Paid in full." That's the right kind of idea. So I want you to think about it this way. If you possess everything in Christ today, everything, how does that transform the way that you look at other people? Again, I'm just going to speak for myself here, and I hope that this resonates with you. As human beings, what do, how do we typically look at other people? We look at other people in ways that we think to ourselves, "What can I get out of you? How can I use you to get what I want?" Follow me? So we look to people, we look to people to give us identity, we look to people to prop us up, we look to people to please us, we look to people to, all of these things, right? So if I already possess everything in Christ today, how does that transform my relationship with other people? Or how should it transform my relationship with other people? It means that I can give freely, you can give freely to other people without expecting anything in return. Why? Because you already possess everything in Christ. It's yours now. How many of you want to live that way? I want to live that way. Now, it's hard. I get it, okay? But it's a, to live that way, to say, "Wait a minute, I'm a son of the Most High God." You were a son or a daughter of the Most High God, and you possess all promises in Christ right now, today. You don't have to earn it. You don't have to work for it. And so now, it's like, "Okay, now I'm going to stop trying to please you, Lord, because I know that you're pleased with me in Jesus, which now says, 'I can go serve my neighbor freely.'" Does that make sense to everybody? So it's really hard, and so that's one. The other thing is that we're going to see this in Revelation, and that is, all of these things happening, we've already seen through 16 chapters, all of the hail, all of the horses, all, everything. Who's ultimately in charge of the whole thing? God's in charge of the whole thing. So when I get, when we get into Revelation chapter 20, and we talk about, so there's people who say, "No, no, no, the thousand-year reign of Christ is coming." And that's when Jesus is going to reign. And I'm going to encourage you to think about it differently, and I'm going to say, "No, Jesus is reigning now, today, right now." And you're going to say, "Boy, it doesn't look like it," right? Why, if Jesus is reigning, why would he let that person get into office? If Jesus is reigning, why would these things happen in my life? Yeah, I mean, right? So it's what happens, and so Revelation gives us this perspective that we can live in the now and the not yet. All right. So same idea here in Revelation chapter 16, verse 17, when God the Father says, "It is done." Like, all of these things have been fully accomplished, and we live in the now of that, of the victory being won, and the not yet of, we don't yet fully realize it. Does that make sense? We just live in that tension. All right. So let's keep going. Chapter 17. So what we're going to see here in chapter 17, through the end of Revelation, is we're going to see a couple of things. Number one is, we're going to see this political beast. So remember the beasts of chapter 13? You have the political beast, and then you have really the beast that is kind of a false prophet, but they all serve ultimately the dragon. And so 17 is really the overthrow of this political beast. Then we're going to see this song of victory, that is kind of, that really connects back to, and we'll get here next week in worship, in the Song of Moses by the sea. So it's very, very connected to that song of victory at the sea. And then we'll get into the overthrow of the dragon. So we're kind of like, "Okay, this is great. You've overthrown the political beast. That's great, but what about the dragon?" Because the dragon is kind of the puppet master here. So you're going to see the overthrow of the dragon. And then probably one of the greatest, I don't know, sections of the whole Bible is this picture of heaven and the restoration of all things. All right? So that's what we're going to do in chapter 17. So let's take a look here. Verse 1. "Then one of the seven angels, who had the seven bowls, came and said to me, 'Come, I will show you the judgment of the great prostitute, who is seated on many waters.'" So just stop here for a second, and fast forward into Revelation 17, verse 15. So what's the "many waters"? So we want to see this stuff here. Verse 15. "And the angel said to me, 'The waters that you saw where the prostitute is seated are peoples, and multitudes, and nations, and languages.'" So that's what the waters are, okay? So let's go back to verse 1. "Then one of the seven angels, who had the seven bowls, came and said to me, 'Come, I will show you the judgment of the great prostitute, who is seated on peoples, and multitudes, and nations, and languages.'" Okay? So what is the great prostitute doing? The great prostitute is enticing and drawing people away from their relationship with Jesus. So don't, when you think about the great prostitute, I would not say it's certainly not absent sexual immorality, but don't just think that. So it's more than that, all right? Verse 2. "With whom the kings of the earth have committed sexual immorality." So again, this is not, you know, this is not that there's some prostitute out there, and all the kings are having, are committing adultery with this prostitute. I mean, this is a spiritual reality, okay? "And with the wine of whose sexual immorality the dwellers on earth have become drunk." Verse 3. "And he carried me away in the spirit into a wilderness, and I saw a woman sitting on a scarlet beast that was full of blasphemous names, and it had seven heads and ten horns." And so, what is this political beast? Remember, it's going back to chapter 13. The political beast is really positioning themselves as God, okay? So that's what's happening. Verse 4. "The woman was arrayed in purple and scarlet, and adorned with gold and jewels and pearls, holding in her hand a golden cup full of abominations and the impurities of her sexual immorality." In other words, she is super, super enticing. She is, there is so much that is attractive to her, okay? Verse 5. "And on her forehead was written a name of mystery: Babylon the Great, mother of prostitutes and earth's abominations; and I saw the woman drunk with the blood of the saints, the blood of the martyrs of Jesus." Okay, so what is going on here? So look at verse 5. Babylon the Great, so who's that? The mother of prostitutes. So this is, when it says "mother of prostitutes," we say this all the time in English, you say, "The mother of all," whatever, right? That means the most, it's the pinnacle, right? So it's not the mother of all prostitutes, meaning all other prostitutes necessarily come from her. Does that make sense? But she's the top dog in terms of prostitutes. That's what it's saying here, okay? So what is she doing? What she is doing is she is enticing believers to essentially commit adultery and go against their relationship with Jesus. That's what she's doing. And is she good at it? Oh, yes, she is, okay? And in verse 6. "And I saw the woman drunk with the blood of the saints, the blood of the martyrs of Jesus." And she is drawing multitudes of people away from people who are in a relationship with Jesus. So let's just stop here for a second. I'll bet many of you have heard some things. In other words, who is this Babylon the Great? Who is it? Anybody know? Or anybody have an idea? Who is it? So Rome is one. Okay, so how do you know that? So fast forward into verse 9. Says, "This calls for wisdom, it calls for a mind of wisdom. The seven heads are seven mountains on which the woman is seated." So which country has seven mountains? Rome. So anybody reading this would, if they were reading this in the first century, they would say, "It's Rome." So who's Babylon the Great? Is it Rome? So here's, again, this is really important, and so, from this point in time, first century AD, really up through, let's say, the fourth or fifth century, most Christians were like, "It's Rome. It's Rome." But then what happens to Rome? What happens? They fall. So then what happens? Then people are like, "Well, maybe it's not Rome. Maybe it's somebody else." So then in the 12th century, there's a church father, his name is Nicholas of Lyra. In the 12th century AD, what does he say? He says that Babylon the Great, that this prostitute is who? Islam, okay? Well, then, 300 years later, a monk named Martin Luther comes back, and he says, "Who's Babylon the Great?" He says, "It's Rome. It's the Roman Catholic Church." Okay? So he then connects it back to the Roman Catholic Church. And so pretty much for the last 500 years, when we say, "It's Rome," how do you connect that to our current day? You follow me? So for probably 500 years, it was, "Hmm, maybe it is Rome. Maybe it is the Roman Catholic Church. Maybe it's that." What do you think? What, who do you think it is? Or who do you think it could be? So here's the thing, is why is it, so some people, some people actually say that Babylon, the city of Babylon, is this Babylon the Great is a future kingdom, and it's literally the kingdom of Babylon that's just going to be rebuilt. There are people who say that. I would not say that. So then you look around our world, and you see, hmm, there is this prostitute that is enticing, that is working through political power, and is leading people away from Jesus, intentionally, in an enticing way. Anybody fit that bill? Yep? Yes, this would be the same beast. This is Babylon the Great, okay? So who would, who is it? I heard somebody say the United States. Okay, so there are people who would say, "It's the United States of America." Anybody else? The government? Which government? Everybody's government, okay? All right. What's that? Whoever holds the most power, okay? Again, I'm not making any statements here. I'm not, okay? But as I look at Islam, I'm like, hmm. So it is, it is enticing. It is enticing. It is something that is working through political authorities with the goal of leading people away from Jesus. And again, what happens in the Scriptures is that this beast, that is, this prostitute, is coming, where do they come from ultimately? They come out of the church. So they are false religion. Where does Islam come? So just one second, I'll get right to you. So Martin Luther, back in the 16th century, what he says is, he says that Islam is not, he doesn't consider Islam a different religion. We think of it as a different religion. Luther just sees it as a heresy against the Trinity. He sees it as a Trinitarian heresy that has risen up from the church. That's true, okay? And so there is this sense that it's coming up out of the church, right? And so anyway, David, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, good question. So you're correct in that it does not have to be somebody that is contemporary. And in fact, the people that are reading this for the first time in the first century AD, they would know exactly who this is, right? And so we see in chapter 13 and following, or chapter 12 and following, that the dragon is, has kind of his two puppets, right? And there are these two beasts that are working. And so whatever fits the bill is, that's the work of the beast, right? So we don't necessarily need to have some contemporary connection to it. However, I do think it's important for us to think, "Okay, first and foremost, here's how..." first and foremost, here's how the people of God would have seen it, uh, would have connected it in their day. And then now, rather than saying, oh, because there are some who would say this, oh, well, the, um, the, the Book of Revelation really ends in like seventy A.D. with the destruction of the temple, and it doesn't matter to us anymore, right? There are some who would say that. And, and so we've got a, uh, it's very applicable to our life of faith today. So does that make sense? Yes.
The beast and the prostitute are the same thing. Yep. Yep. Yes. Yes. Correct. Yes. Yep. So it's what this, it's what the beast and the prostitute are doing. So yes. Yeah, so we're gonna get to that. Let's, let's get to that. Uh, because here's what's, so we're gonna get to that, because here's what's actually happening, is, is God is working to, to use and work through this beast and the prostitute to then take, take everything down, right? So they turn on each other. Does that make sense? Okay. All right. Yes. I couldn't hear you. Why was it drink, so don't think of this, so don't think of this as drinking real blood. Think of this as persecution and killing the saints. Okay, so, so this beast, this prostitute is, now again, are there, is, is, we wanna see what the, kind of the MO is. We want to see that the, the role of this beast, the prostitute, is to draw people away from relationship in Jesus to their own destruction, okay? Somebody else had a hand up. Yes. Yes. Hmm, mhm, yes. 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 Yeah. Correct. So Rosie is talking about compromise, and I couldn't, couldn't, couldn't agree more. Um, and so, which is why what we need, what do we need? Because how many of us make compromises? We do it all the time. We do it all the time. And, 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 uh, and we want to point the finger at somebody and say, no, 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 they're compromising, but I'm the real one, right? We wanna say that all the time. Um, what do you and I need? Every time we make that compromise, what do we need? We need, we need to come to God for His forgiveness. And when we've gone away from Him, we need to, for Him to bring us back over and over and over and over again. That's what we need, okay? Um, so let's, um, I wanna get to something here if I can. Um, so let's look at ver, the end of verse six, the middle of verse six, um, says, "When I saw her, I marvelled greatly." This doesn't mean, like, um, like, you know, he's enticed or something like that. He's just like, oh my gosh, this is a, this is unbelievable what's happening. Verse seven. "But the angel said to me, 'Why do you marvel? I will tell you the mystery of the woman and the beast with the seven heads, uh, and the ten horns that carries her. The beast that you saw was and is not and is about to rise.'" So there's a connection here. Remember, uh, Jesus is the one, all the way back in chapter one, uh, the one who was, the one who is, and the one who is to come. So there's, there's kind of a play on words here. Uh, isn't it, the one who you saw was, is not, and is about to rise. "From the bottomless pit and go to destruction, and the dwellers on the earth whose names have not been written in the book of life, from the foundation of the, of the world, will marvel to see the beast." So when they see this beast rise up, it will be so enticing. Uh, it was and is not and is to come. Verse nine, "This calls for a mind of wisdom." So if you go back into Revelation thirteen with, with the number of the beast, again, here's John kind of saying, listen up here, I'm gonna tell you something, but you need to know what I'm talking about, wink, wink, right? Uh, "This calls for a mind of wisdom. The seven heads are seven mountains on which the woman is seated." Okay, so again, we've said, what, what is he referring to here? Rome, okay? "They are also seven kings, five of whom have fallen. One is, the other has not yet come. And when he co, he does come, he must remain only a little while." As for the beast, so this is just the rise and fall of kings. Uh, verse eleven, "As for the beast that was and is not, it is an eighth, but it belongs to the seven, and it goes to destruction." So again, here is this beast that is working in and through kings in the, in the world, these political, uh, uh, beasts. Verse twelve, "And the ten horns that you saw are ten kings." So again, we, what we want to do, a lot of people want to do, is identify these, these ten kings. Maybe it's, uh, um, um, the United Nations or something like that. And again, the number ten is what? It's the, it's God's number, right? So three and seven, so really important number. It's also the number of completeness. Uh, so you can just see, uh, and the ten horns that you saw are ten kings, a full number of kings that God is gonna work to, who have not received royal power, but they are to receive authority as kings for one hour together with the beast. These are of one mind, and they hand over their power and authority to the beast. "They will make war on the lamb, and the lamb will conquer them, for he is lord of lords and king of kings, and tho, those with him are called and chosen and faithful." Okay, so we're gonna stop there for just a second. I didn't get, I was not able to get to where I wanted to go, uh, today. Apologize for that. We'll get there next week. Um, but I'm gonna send you there for just a moment. But open your Bibles, turn in your Bibles to the book of Hosea. If you've been in any kind of Bible study with me, um, I, I have a hard time not going to the book of Hosea. I think it's one of the most incredible books in the whole Bible. Um, so it is all about, uh, spiritual prostitution or spiritual adultery, uh, lived out in real life, okay? So I'm not saying these are like metaphors. I mean, these are real people, okay? So it's after Daniel, and it's before Joel, okay? So that helps you, okay? So Hosea, chapter one, I'm just gonna summarize Hosea, chapter one. What happens is, is Hosea gets married, God, God says to, to Hosea, "Hey, I want you to marry this woman. Her name is Gomer." And Hosea's like, yeah, but she's a prostitute. I want you to marry her anyway. Go marry the, marry this prostitute. So then she has a children, she has children, not with Hosea. And the name of her children, she names her son Lo Ami, which means not mine. So you're Hosea, you're married to a prostitute, and you're caring for a son that's not your son, and that your son is, is illegitimate, born of your wife, who's a prostitute. That's what's happening, okay? This is why we don't preach on this a lot of times, and, uh, I mean, this is like rated R, right? I mean, uh, but it's still important, okay? Verse two, or, or chapter two, here's what happens. Uh, Gomer, she does not quit, she does not quit giving herself up as a prostitute. She keeps doing it over and over and over, going away, going outside the covenant relationship and marriage that she has with her husband Hosea, okay? In chapter two, she keeps doing that so much that she ends up for sale. So she gives herself, and now she's literally a slave, and she is up for sale. Chapter three, the one of the greatest chapters in the whole Bible. I'm just gonna read it to you. So I want you to think about what's happening here. So Hosea goes to the auction and sees his wife, who has been prostituting herself, all, I mean, she's been the woman who's been going all over town, uh, sleeping with everybody she can find. That's what's happening. And Hosea shows up to the auction. And this is what it says, says, "And the Lord said to me, 'Go again. Love a woman who is loved by another man and is an adulteress. Even as the Lord loves the children of Israel.'" I mean, he's saying this, he's like, Hosea, now you know how I feel. Okay? "Even as the Lord loves the children of Israel, though they turn to other gods and love cakes of raisins." So, uh, cakes of raisins is, is, uh, like an aphrodisiac, okay? Verse two, "So I bought her for fifteen shekels of silver and a homer and a lethic of barley. And all of the people turn around, once he bid, he's in the back, and he bids this, this price for her, which is a crazy price, and they'll, they'll go, that prostitute, she isn't worth a nickel." And Hosea buys her anyway. So when we talk about, when we use the word redemption, everybody heard that word, redemption? What does that mean? Means to buy you back. Okay? So then Hosea says to her, verse three. "And I said to her, 'You must dwell as mine for many days. You shall not play the whore or belong to another man, so will I also be to you.'" In other words, we're gonna rebuild our relationship. Verse four, "For the children of Israel shall dwell many days without king or prince." So he's connecting this to what's happening with Hosea and his wife. "For the children of Israel shall dwell many days without king or prince, without sacrifice or pillar, without ephod or household gods. Afterward, the children of Israel shall return and seek the Lord their God and David their king, and they shall come in fear to the Lord and to His goodness in the latter days." And he's saying, he's, he's saying, look, Hosea, what you do for your wife is exactly what I'm doing for you. And it's exactly what I'm doing for my people. It's exactly what I'm doing, that they cheat on me, they go far from me, they, they, they commit adultery on, on me. I don't abandon them, they abandon me, but it is I who go, and I redeem them, and I win them, and I purchase them back. It's gospel, and it's beautiful. So we're gonna get into, uh, into that a little bit more in chapter four of Hosea. Go ahead and read it, uh, in your own devotional time if you want to. It's, it's, it's absolutely dripping with good news and gospel, what Jesus does for us. So, uh, anyway, let's, let's close this time in prayer. Heavenly Father, I thank you for what you do for us in Jesus. I thank you for winning us back, paying a, an enormous price for us, uh, which is your blood, your whole life. And so, Lord, I thank you for, for winning us back as your bride. And Lord, I pray that we also, this week, uh, live as if we actually do believe that we possess everything in Christ today, and that we demonstrate love for our neighbor. And Lord, we love you. We thank you for loving us. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen. God bless you, and we will see you next week.